Good evening, welcome to the Township of Lacey, May 8, 2014 meeting. Admitted notice of this meeting is beginning according to the open public in the act pursuant to public clause nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Lacey and the Beacon and was posted on the Bolton Board showing the time and the place of the meeting. We're going to begin with a salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, item number one, first reading of ordinance two thousand fourteen eleven, setting salaries for the crossing guards.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, amending in order to the title, in order to the Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensations of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is for the crossing guards, it's a unit of five individuals, it's for raises for fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen on their hourly rate, it was a two percent, so they are making from nine dollars and thirty-six cents an hour to fifteen dollars and seven cents an hour.
Have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number two, first reading of ordinance two thousand fourteen twelve, amending chapter three thirty-five zoning of the township code.
Resolution, in order to the Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter three thirty-five of the township code of the township of Lacey entitled zoning so as to amend three thirty-five dash seventy-nine entitled zoning permits. This is making various changes to the elevations of the lowest floor of any structure, first floors in any floor area intended to be as inhabitable space, and garage enclosures and other areas intended for limited storage shall not be less than eight inches above centerline of the abutting street. That change is there, and the other changes we're making is for the cost of a base fee permit for the dwelling and the engineer's review of the plot plan submission and the engineering inspection fee.
Have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number three, resolution two thousand fourteen one twenty-one, appointing a part-time fire subcode inspector.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, authorizing the employment of Kenneth Metcalf as a temporary part-time fire subcode official and inspector for the Township of Lacey. This is a temporary, as-needed position for a fire subcode official, our current one is retiring as of July first.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number four, resolution two thousand fourteen one twenty-two, appointing seasonal recreation staff.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, authorizing the employment of seasonal employees for the recreation department. These would be the young ladies and men that work in our parks program, our beach patrol program, our extended school year program, the office staff and special events, and our bus drivers for the recreation programs.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Abstain.
Mayor Quinn?
I abstain too. Number five, resolution two thousand fourteen one twenty-three prohibiting the use of tobacco in public parks.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey prohibiting the use of tobacco products in public parks and recreational areas. Lacey Township is taking on the mission of making our public parks and beaches and public properties a healthier environment by making them smoke-free. We will be posting signs that Mr. Curatolo will present to us later throughout our public parks and beaches.
Have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number six, resolution two thousand fourteen one twenty-four, authorizing the adoption of the Ocean County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, authorizing the adoption of the Ocean County Multi-Jurisdictional All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. This has been a plan that the county was working on long before Hurricane Sandy hit, and Hurricane Sandy brought it to the forefront again that the county needed to focus on what is known as the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. It doesn't only cover hurricanes, it covers all other types of natural disasters, events, even a nuclear event, and forest fires. And what also helps with us as applying for further grants and also becoming a part of the community rating system for flood insurance. So once the county has, we've all participated in the county's plan, the towns now adopt and become part of the county plan and now have their own hazard mitigation plan, which we're utilizing from the county plan.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number seven, resolution two thousand fourteen one twenty-five, supporting the affordable housing project being constructed on block eighteen thirty-seven, lots eight point oh two and nine.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, expressing the township support in determining that a need exists for an affordable housing project to be constructed as part of a redevelopment project on block eighteen thirty-seven, a portion of lot eight point oh two and lot nine. This is a seventy-unit multifamily housing project that will be built, what is known as the former nursing home site, which was nine sixteen Lacey Road. We are entering into a contract with Walters Development Group, and this is being utilized via our Council on Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Abstain.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number eight, resolution two thousand fourteen one twenty-six, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Walters Development Group for the Lacey Apartments Project.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, authorizing an agreement for payments in lieu of taxes with Walters Development Group for Lacey Apartments LLC on block eighteen thirty-seven, a portion of lot eight point oh two and lot nine. This is the in lieu of tax payments, this is under the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Financing Agency. What happens is in one of these projects, when they're funded by the HMFA, the developer will pay an in lieu payment of property taxes where the town would get a hundred percent of the portion of those taxes rather than splitting it off to the other agencies. At this time, we're slated to receive about forty-one thousand dollars a year, and it's based on the revenue projections set forth for the rentals of those apartments. It's the same project, that same kind of payment that we receive from those over at the Toll Brothers site, and at one time Spring Oak Assistant Living was under the same FMHA program.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Abstain.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number nine, resolution two thousand fourteen one twenty-seven, awarding a contract to Meadowbrook Industries for solid waste recycling collection.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, awarding a one-year, seven-month contract for the disposal of solid waste collection and single-stream recycling collection services to Meadowbrook Industries Incorporated. Bids received on April twenty-second, bids were reviewed by the Director of Public Works and the Township Attorney. The township is awarding options one, ten, thirteen, and sixteen. Option one is twice a week garbage disposal pickup at the residential and qualified commercial properties. Option ten is the same garbage disposal pickup for the schools. Option thirteen is the once-a-week single-stream recycling pickup for the residential and commercial properties, and option sixteen is the single-stream recycling pickup for the schools. The unit price for option one is eight dollars and eighty-seven cents per unit. Option ten, it was three, thirty-three hundred dollars per month. Option thirteen is two dollars and fifty-five cents per unit, and per unit means the household. And option sixteen was the single-stream collection for the schools, was thirteen fifty-two a month. This contract will run from June first of two thousand fourteen to December thirty-first of two thousand fifteen.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number ten, resolution two thousand fourteen one twenty-eight, awarding a contract of the purchase of regulatory signs.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of regulatory signs to Garden State Highway Products Incorporated. This is being awarded under the Ocean County Cooperative Pricing System, which the lead agency is Stafford Township. There were three bids received on March twenty-seventh, and Garden State Highway Products offered the lowest bid.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number eleven, resolution two thousand fourteen one twenty-nine, authorizing the execution of an agreement for conflict township council.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Dasty Murphy, McGuffin, Chirkos, and Connors as conflict township attorney for the Township of Lacey's redevelopment project on block eighteen thirty-seven, lot eight point oh two and lot nine.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Abstain.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number twelve, resolution two thousand fourteen one thirty, authorizing the execution of an agreement for conflict public defender.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Dasty Murphy, McGuffin, Chirkos, and Connors as conflict public defender for the Township of Lacey.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Abstain.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number thirteen, resolution two thousand fourteen one thirty-one, authorizing release for performance bond for block eight fifty-two point oh two, lot five.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement performance guarantee for Jay Solvanto, block eight fifty-two point oh two, lot five, upon the posting of a maintenance guarantee. This is for the building located on Route nine between South Street and Warren Avenue. It's the old Lakeside Heating and Air Conditioning Site.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number fourteen, resolution two thousand fourteen one thirty-two, authorizing cancellation of uncollectible taxes.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel uncollectible taxes and refund tax overpayments.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number fifteen, resolution two thousand fourteen one thirty-three, authorizing refund of deposit monies.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Peter?
Peter, you want to move that?
Move that. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number sixteen, resolution two thousand fourteen one thirty-four, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of five million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-four cents.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number seventeen, voting reports.
Vote opening permits for the month of April were collected in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. Recycling commodity for the month of April was collected in the amount of five hundred and forty-seven dollars. Truck parking for the month of April was collected in the amount of two thousand four hundred dollars. Municipal clerk's office for the month of April collected receipts in the amount of eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and three cents, and community development collected receipts in the amount of fifty-three thousand, four hundred and eight dollars. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Item number eighteen, motion to approve township meeting minutes of April twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen.
Move it. Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Item number nineteen, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of April twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen.
Move it. Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Item number twenty, motion to approve Raffle License Amendment for the Lacey Elks Lodge.
Move it. Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Items.
It's resolution two thousand fourteen one thirty-five, resolution Township of Lacey County, Boston State, New Jersey, authorizing release of monies charged for municipal truck parking. We had a gentleman who needed to utilize our truck parking, had renewed its lease, and then his employer changed the location of the truck, so he no longer needs it, and he just renewed it, so we're going to refund him his hundred and fifty dollars, and we already have the spot filled.
Most.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
That is all I have to add on this evening.
Any comments in the meeting, Mr. Dykoff?
No comments, Mayor. Mr. Curatolo?
Yeah, first, really some important business, I want to say Happy Mother's Day. I think that Mother's Day, Mother's Day is the eleventh, and I want to tell my mother I love her, not too old to do that, so I hope she's listening or sees one of the reruns, and certainly appreciate the glue of the community, which are our moms everywhere. I think that's important to recognize, and I know that everyone on this diocese is in agreement with that. Another brief bit of business, if I could transition, Ocean County Opia Task Force met Monday, May fifth. To date, as of May fifth, twenty-four overdoses, twenty-four overdose deaths, fourteen reversals with Narcan, twelve through police departments, two through EMTs. Last year at this time, we had forty-four overdose deaths as a county. So I think some of our education efforts are working, we all work together with that, and we, I know the prosecutor's office is taking a lead with that, we also have local police departments, obviously Chief Peproda here, definitely education efforts throughout the town, throughout the county, throughout our township, and they seem to be bearing some fruit, so I'm encouraged by that. I want to also let people know, important, I see one of our, two, I'm sorry, two veterans that I know in the audience tonight, I'm fortunate enough to be the liaison to the Lacey Township Veterans Commission, it's a great honor to do that. So I want to remind all of our residents that we will have our parade for Memorial Day, so I'm going to just read a brief notice here. So you're cordially invited to participate in the Memorial Day Parade to be held on Monday, May twenty-sixth. Lineup will begin at nine AM in the parking lot of Lacey United Methodist Church, two oh three Lacey Road, Forkett River, New Jersey. We'll be stepping off at ten AM. The parade will then proceed up Lacey Road to the Veterans Memorial located in front of the Lacey Municipal Building slash Courthouse and Police Department Headquarters. A memorial service with wreath-laying ceremony will take place at the end of the parade on Veterans Memorial Monument. So if you have an opportunity, these veterans, these men, women are great people, we have young veterans, we have senior veterans, I know our meeting is fairly well-attended each month, I encourage everyone to go out there, it's a great part of our township, along with our fireworks, a very patriotic town, and it's part of the reason I like to live here. So if you have an opportunity to go out to see, thank a veteran, please do it. The last bit I have tonight, as you know, I'm employed at the County Health Department, and we try to do healthy, call it low-hanging fruit when we can, we try to do healthy initiatives, improves our standing statewide on our county health rank, so to have a resolution to support no-smoking initiative, especially in the light of the massive Berkeley brush fire, I think is smart. It'll mean less pollution, it'll mean cleaner air for seniors, everyone from seniors down to our students, I think that's important, it's low-hanging fruit, and again, it's through resolution. So we encourage people to certainly follow that resolution, and because there's so many of us that do use the parks. So that's all that I have this evening, Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Curatolo. Mr. Kennis?
Thanks, I too would also like to wish all women everywhere a very Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you. Mr. Most?
Yes, good evening to all the residents out there in Lacey Township. Municipal Alliance will be hosting a bus trip Saturday, May twenty-fourth. If you'd be interested in signing up, come to our rec, first come, first served, it's Arnie Town Cemetery, the parade and the military ceremony, and it's basically showing the respect to all our veterans and our current active servicemen and women that are out there fighting for our country, and that's Memorial Day prior to it, May twenty-fourth. And after they go through the trip, the bus trip, they're serving lunch at Captain's Inn, so it's nineteen dollars, they leave at eight-thirty in the morning, like I said, from the rec building, that's on Saturday, May twenty-fourth, Arnie Town Cemetery. So if you're interested, stop by our rec building. I don't know, I know this committee realizes that we're going to be opening the park, and we're also going to have a family fun walk on May seventeenth, so I'm kind of hoping our committee and I guess the mayor, you'll be there, right, for opening Hebrew Park. I want to thank Casey and his workers for doing a fine job, I encourage everybody to take advantage of the park, it's a beautiful park. Has anybody seen it out there? Anybody? No? Go visit it, it's pretty impressive, the soccer field's done, the playground, basketball courts, tennis courts, and it's really going to be nice for our community, so. I appreciate all that work that was done down there, and the Rotary Club as well, so the ribbon cutting starts eleven o'clock in the morning, that's May seventeenth, and prior to that at ten is the family fun walk. So I know it's been tough as far as that sun coming out, but I'm hoping on May seventeenth it'll be a nice day, so. I also want to let everybody know that the Prosecutor's Forum at the Pine Belt Arena from five to nine, Richie Sambora, Maureen Morella, and Nancy Joyce, who serves on our Municipal Alliance, she lost her daughter to an overdose, and that's going to be Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, and that's five to nine. And like Pete was talking about, you know, our numbers have gone down, we've done a lot of environmental changes here in Lacey Township, not only in the school systems and the police departments, they've made it a priority, but we've done a lot of work with the Municipal Alliance, and as far as Task Force is concerned, we had a meeting today, and Tom Kelly is one of our representatives, and as a medical professional, he's a local pharmacist, the medicine to go, and he just went to a national conference, and he was sharing some of his successes in different communities that were really making some headway against this drug epidemic, and he was saying that the kids, when they deal with peer-to-peer, it seems like the message is really getting out. And the reason why I mentioned this Prosecutor's Forum tonight is because I run five Ks usually, and when I was running down Lacey Road out in Bamber, I obviously took the proportions, this isn't the first needle I came across, but this one I found on Lacey Road tonight, so I thought it was a nice segue to let you guys know that this epidemic is not only here in Lacey Township, it's throughout the county, it's throughout the state of New Jersey. So I'm not embarrassed to deal with this issue, and we're not, you know, I'm very proud of everything we're doing in this community to fight this, I mean, if you look at it, we've had two Narcan saves, right, Mayor? This year alone, and we had two deaths as far as overdoses, and we've had twelve total this year, and, you know, I'm very proud of those numbers as far as coming down, but, you know, who knows what's going to happen, but I know we're fighting the fight, and I would have never thought, as a committee person, that we'd be in this situation that we're in, but guess what, we have to deal with it as a community, and I believe we're doing that in Lacey, so I'm very proud of all our efforts. So I encourage all the parents that have students in the high school, the middle school, elementary school, to come out to that forum, because they're going to have some really dynamic speakers, I think it's really going to be educational. And one of the educational points I've learned along the way is we have to build our kids strong to make right decisions, and I think that's a big key, and educating them at a very young age is very important. Moving on to another topic, I want to thank Mr. Moss, and we're very proud of our veterans, he's going around selling all the poppy flowers for the veterans, and we appreciate that as well, and that's all I have to say, Mayor. Yeah, I won't be attending that, because the MS Bike Event is on the same day, May seventeenth, so I appreciate you guys representing us there at the park, and I know the mayor and this committee will do a good job, so. We're actually going from Monmouth College down to Pine Lands, it's an eighty-five mile haul, and they collect close to a million dollars to fight MS, so that's a beautiful thing too, and I know, I see Mr. Bender out there for the Relay for Life, we're very heavily involved in that, and Lacey, Berkeley's taking it, and it's really nice to see the community coming together and fighting these, because, you know, our neighbors are afflicted with this, and we just need to do all we can to help, so that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thanks, Dave. I'm going to start with the police stats first. Let's see, police statistics for the month of April two thousand fourteen. Lacey Township Police Department handled four thousand five hundred and nine calls for service during the month of April. We had one thousand six motor vehicle stops resulting in three hundred and eighty-nine summonses and a hundred and fifty-one written warnings. Sixty motor vehicle accidents, a hundred and ninety-one first aid calls, nine DUI arrests, seventy-six physical arrests, and seven drug arrests. The police department is currently investigating several daytime burglaries of residents in town. The unknown actor or actors used forced entry to either pry open a window or push in a door to gain access to the unoccupied residences. The burglaries involved the theft of small items of value including jewelry and electronic devices. The burglaries have occurred at different areas of the township, including one on South Street in Lenoah Harbor, one on Oxford Road in Lenoah Harbor, one on Cleveo Street in Forkett River, one on East Lakeside Drive in Forkett River, and one on Holmes Avenue South in Forkett River. The burglaries have occurred over the past two months, and is believed that they occurred during daytime hours when the homes are unoccupied. The detective bureau is conducting the continuing investigation. Anyone with information regarding the burglaries is asked to call Lieutenant Cornelius, six nine three six six three six, or submit an anonymous tip on our crime tip through the police department website at www.lacypd.org. Lacey Township Police Department Patrol Officers have been engaging in dedicated DUI enforcement efforts this year, resulting in over forty DUI arrests thus far this year. The police department will be working with other agencies, including the Ocean County Prosecutor's Office, to utilize enforcement grants to increase patrols specifically designed to deter impaired driving due to alcohol and/or drugs, and to hold those accountable who drive while impaired. The efforts are geared towards reducing incidents of DUI and creating a safer environment for the motoring public. Police Department recently dealt with a new synthetic hallucinogenic drug known as twenty-five I. The presence of the drug in town appears to be on a limited basis to a very small group of teens who were able to obtain the drug, or to obtain the small quarter-inch paper tabs over the internet. Anyone with information regarding the drug is asked to call Detective Sertis, six nine three six six two six, extension two five seven two. Detective Robert Sertis is also currently investigating over forty reports of ATM card fraud originating from the Bank of America branch on Lacey Road. Records are being obtained along with any available video to further the investigation. This particular group of frauds involve the use of PINs associated with each card, periodically changing PIN numbers is one preventative way that residents can use to avoid being victimized. Like Mr. Moss said, we have had, at the last meeting I think I talked about, we had had a individual saved by our police department with the Narcan drug that they had worked with to bring the person back, and I'm sorry to say, this week we had another case, but the same situation occurred. The Narcan had to be induced into the individual twice, but that individual was also saved. It was also the sorner's that was inducing that one, so... Our officers are trained, they're doing a great job, but we just hope and pray that these individuals that are on that path will take and realize that it's time for a change and, you know, not keep going down that same road. Dave touched on the ribbon cutting next week over at Hebrew Park. Like he said, it's really, we've taken and revamped that park. We had to go in there. Last year, we spent X amount of money to go out and revamp some of the fields as well as the play equipment, based on the insurance company telling us that we had to deal with these issues or they were gonna become unsafe for the residents to be utilizing those facilities. So it's gonna be a nice day, hopefully the weather will be good. Like Dave said, he participates every year in an MS Bike Ride to raise funds for that cause, and hats off to you because I can't ride a mile on my bike, and you know, was it 82 miles he ride?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five miles.
Yeah, let's not forget those extra three.
And he's been doing it for a number of years even though he's getting older, so I give him a lot of credit. We wish you the best, and in our situation here, we always kinda nominate Dave to be the go guy when it comes to anything physical, you know. The rest of us don't have to just stand there and smile. So in knowing that Dave's not gonna be there, we are gonna take and volunteer Peter for the fun walk that morning, so he can be at the park at 10 o'clock.
Well, is this not a fun run?
Well, hopefully it's not a rain fun walk.
It's a walk I can have.
But it is gonna be a nice day, so if you're around town, come on out and enjoy it. The parade, again, you know, my fellow committee members talked about it. If you have a team or you have a group of kids involved in scouting or anything at all, you know, we certainly like to see the parade grow more and more each year, and the, you know, parade organizers are all looking for groups, so if you wanna get involved in it and bring your group out, certainly, you know, reach out to them and show up that day, and we'd be happy to have you. I know Mr. Bender's gonna talk about the Relay for Life. I just wanna touch on one thing. You know, we are, again, participating this year with Berkeley Township, and Monday night I had the privilege of going up to Berkeley Township's council meeting and doing a joint proclamation with Carmen Amado, the Mayor up in Berkeley Township, and myself representing the residents of Lacy Township. I know it's coming up the end of the month. Barry, I'll leave that all to you to say when you come up here, but I just want the residents to know that it's such a very, very important cause. Cancer certainly affects each and every one of us at some point in our lives. So if you have the ability to get out, you know, participate, if you're not on a team, Barry's gonna tell you how to get on a team, and, you know, come on out and, you know, do something that's very good as a cause, but also something that you'll enjoy at the end of the day, so... And the last comment I have, you know, which my fellow committee members all touched on, is Happy Mother's Day to everyone. We hope you have a great weekend. The weather looks like it's gonna be good, so get out and enjoy your families. Having said that, I'll open the floor to a public comment. Eric? Now, you gotta wait till you call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
Do you have a sheet to sign it?
Nope.
No, just raise your hand.
Gave me the plug, so I figured I'd get up quick. Just to wanna remind everybody...
I'm sorry, name and address, please.
Oh, sorry. Barry Bender, Historic Bay Avenue. Just wanted to remind everybody, May 31st and June 1st will be the Relay for Life at Veterans Park in Bayville. We're gonna be, I guess, Saturday mornings, people start coming around 10:30, 11 o'clock in the morning. Things really kick off. The Survivor Lunch is noon. This year, we're moving the Survivor Lunch out of the gazebo far away from where everything else was. We're gonna have it right on the same field where everything else goes on this year, which is gonna be a lot easier for a bunch of people. What else? We need more teams. We're almost to our goal that we set for teams, but the more, the merrier. I'm not the chairperson. I'm the logistics chairperson.
Well, I said you were the Lacy chairperson, so...
Well, the chairperson is from Lacy, actually, Roxanne Stevens. But around 2 o'clock is where most of the things kick off on Saturday, and anybody who's come, we go all night long. There's no sleeping. You stay awake. We have things going on all night long. It's a lot of fun. It's a wonderful cause. I'll just tell you firsthand, the first time I went to one, when they lit up the bags and turned out the lights and people started walking around that track, even just saying it now, I get a chill up my spine. That's what it's all about, as far as I'm concerned. But we need more teams. Anybody who's interested, I don't have the website. We're gonna be putting flyers up. Question we had, though, as far as lawn signs, when is it okay to start?
May 17th, yeah.
Well, that's the big sign. I'm putting a four-by-four up in the parkway.
The lawn signs, you can, yeah.
Okay, so from the 17th on, we can put...
They can put them up anytime they want.
Okay, all right, great. Appreciate that. Again, just wanna remind everybody out there, it's a wonderful time. Even if you're not on a team, just come by. People are gonna be selling things. There's gonna be tons of food. It's, if you've ever been, you know, it's really nice in the setting that we're in where people go and walk around through the trees and stuff is very, very nice over there at Berkeley. So thank you for letting me put in my plug.
And for folks watching at home, if anyone's interested and wants to set up a team, we'll just ask them to call Town Hall, and we'll pass them along to you.
They can go right on to the American Cancer Society website, and there's a way to register a team.
Relayforlife.com/berkley, I think, is where they go to sign in.
Yeah, I think it's ACSevents.org/berkley, I think it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that. But you could just Google Relay for Life Berkeley, and it came up on my search engine first thing tonight.
Yep, yep. So we're, here's another. The last two years. Last year was miserable. It rained. It was horrible. The year before that, at 3 o'clock in the morning, the sky opened up. No rain this year on the 31st or the 1st. That's the deal. Have a good night.
Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
Gary Giudano, Joseph McCow, Joseph McCow, 3 New York Avenue. Mayor and Council, I'll just be very short and sweet. The lowest responsible bidder for your solid waste and recycling bid that came out, that you just awarded tonight on number nine, to medical card. I urges to have a special council meeting now when you finish this meeting, and renege that, and call your council to avoid a very expensive litigation for the town because it's gonna go to litigation for the town because the person that you're awarding it to has a fatal flaw in their bid. We made the presentation today to both your township attorney and your township clerk. We urge them not to do that. You don't have to award it today. You can postpone it. You have up to 60 days to postpone it with emergency service. If they do not want to provide emergency service for you, we will provide emergency service for the town at the current price. So to avoid let the litigation for all the town people here, it's a very specific set of rules that mandate this bid. It's the uniform bid codes, and there is no variation from them. There's curable defects, and then there is what they have, incurable defect.
Mr. Giudano, I'm not gonna get into a conversation with you because you've indicated that you're gonna be threatening to sue the township, so we won't get into a discussion.
No, I'm not threatening. I'm trying to tell you to...
Having said that, let me just say one thing. We voted on it tonight. Your initial statement that you made that you were a little bitter, and I assume you're talking about representing Galaxy Waste...
Joseph McCow.
Joseph McCow.
Okay, Joseph. Same thing as Galaxy. I think it's just part of the name. But at any case, we bid the contract 20-something different ways, and we have within every legal right to take and award the contract the way we choose. We chose to take and award a contract for a year and seven months is what we awarded tonight.
Yes.
You were not the lowest bidder. You were, in fact, the lowest bidder on a four-and-a-half-year contract.
That's correct.
This governing body was not happy with the prices that we received from contractors on the longer-term bids.
I understand.
So we believe in our residents' best interest that the year and seven months was the best way to go. Knowing that that was our decision, the lowest bidder on that was medical contracting.
Mr. Mayor...
Moving forward, excuse me one second. You're saying that you were trying to get information to our council for the last couple of days. The information was emailed to our council at 1:46 this afternoon. Our council reviewed the four items that you were taking and claiming there's a discrepancy, and our council believes that there is not a discrepancy in it. We, you know, she works for us. We go by what we are told by our council. Sir, I respect what you're saying, but at the end of the line, you've threatened litigation. If that's the path you choose to take, we will take and litigate whatever we have to litigate. But we believe the decision has been made. We're not gonna go back and revisit it, but you know, that's where we're gonna sit us on that.
I just wanted to come up and let the town council and the mayor and council know.
We understand that, yeah.
We did reach out to the attorney for much longer time than that. She finally got back with us today after we spoke.
I'm sorry. I do have to say that that's not the case. Every time that your attorney has called me personally, I have called him back. The only time I received anything with regard to specifics was at 1:46 today.
And we do have a copy of that.
You did award to lowest bidder, but not the lowest responsible bidder. And that's where you're gonna have a problem.
That's an opinion coming from you, sir, and that's also, if you wanna take and litigate it, that's something we'll defend. So thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Chief, my most recusal...
Hold on.
Let me solve here. Mr. Oliver, when you go back to the microphone, just give your name and address for the record, please.
Japlin Oliverio, 320 Lakeside Drive North in Forkett River, New Jersey. First off, I just wanna say, I believe in God, and I believe everything happens for a reason. So I've been sick for the past few years, and my family is up here instead. And the doctors are having a problem trying to figure out what it is. So I started researching, because if your whole family's sick, you know, to me, it makes sense that maybe it's something environmental. So I started, like, testing for mold and cleaning and doing all that stuff. And then I came to find out that we had deer mice in our basement. So I started asking, questioning, because I looked at the different mice to figure out what kind of mice gives diseases, and that's one of the ones that gives more diseases. So I actually took my kids' health records and my records when I went to see my sister. I tried to get into the CDC to find out questions and talk to people, and I couldn't get in. So I've talked to different doctors. They don't seem to know how to treat or test for any deer mice diseases. So I'm still at a loss, and I haven't been able to rule out if that's an issue with my family. The other issue that I was testing was mold. And the one thing, in the report, there was like a mold study of my home and the outside reference area. And I made them test a little piece of what I thought was like fecal study from the mice on the sink. That came back like a Mycromycetum mold, okay? Now, in my attic, because we started tearing up the, we had a contractor that put in air conditioning and left wide open holes in the outside. So they had gotten up into our upstairs attic, so we had like a severe infestation. So we moved this out of the house, tried to clean everything up, called to see if somebody could come and test, did all that stuff. But when I had the mold study done, everywhere the feces were, it came back this Mycromycetum mold, okay? Now, there's an outside reference of this Mycromycetum mold also. So it's like a fungal mold. And what I've noticed is, from like trying to research and talk to CDC, there's like a lot of fungal meningitis outbreaks, and a lot of the fungal molds that they find are related to feces of, like, from bats or from birds. So I questioned, well, if you can get like a fungal mold which could cause illness, why couldn't you catch it from mice species? Why can't the mice species develop into a fungal mold which could be making our children or residents sick? So I'm laying this up to you to try to help me figure out if it's affecting our residents.
You're the only person that I've heard from about this. I saw this via the Ocean County Board of Health, your petition. They had investigated it, and then nothing was found, did.
I didn't discuss, I did not discuss the mold, no.
Well, there's no standard in the state of New Jersey for mold.
That's true.
I discussed, I'm just laying this out there, so if, you know, if our children are getting sick or there's something going on...
You're the only person that I'm hearing this from. Besides, when the Ocean County Board of Health called me about this petition.
Maybe nobody's researching it. I don't know.
The Ocean County Board of Health did.
No, they sent people around a canvas for garbage. That's what they did as far as I know, okay? But my point being, if there's a fungal mold being established from the deer mice species, because I walked around the neighborhood within two hours, and everyone around me had a problem with mice.
But unfortunately, in the state of New Jersey, there is no standard for mold, so there's no justification for us to, you know, they don't have a standard for mold in the state of New Jersey.
Okay.
So it's kind of hard to say that there is a mold issue when there is no state-set standards and guidelines.
Okay. I'm not trying to have you set a standard. I'm just trying to make you aware of something that could be making our residents and our children sick. If, you know, like Center Street, the whole way down Center Street, every house in this one area had mice. I don't know what kind of mice, okay? Different mice give different diseases. Okay, now, if you have children here, I would think that, you know, they're concerned to just look into it and figure out if there's something going on. I contacted various exterminators to find out if they keep track of what type of mice they catch because some give more diseases than others. You know, my dog just got tested. I just got it back last night for Gardia, which is a parasite...
Giardia.
...which could come from the deer mice. You know what I mean? So if, which can affect the waters, can affect, you know, if there's a problem there, it could be a bigger problem. I'm not sure if anybody's aware of it. I don't even know, you know, if it does exist, but there's a possibility. So I'm throwing that out there for maybe somebody could, like, research this.
If I could interject, I'm an employee of the Ocean County Board of Health. I know that my colleagues in the environmental unit, I do not work in the environmental unit.
Okay.
I work very close by, as far as proximity goes, and I know them. I know that I have seen this because I was concerned when I saw that it was in Lacy. I handed this piece of paper to the director of our environmental unit. I know that this was investigated. We've gotta work within the parameters of the law. We do live, you know, the majority of the property we have here in the township west of the parkway is pine lands. It's undeveloped. There's gonna be critters in there. So when we talk and we try to do education, we talk about specifically environmental changes, it sounds very basic, and I feel for any time one of our residents. And so, and I knew when this came across that, I picked up the phone right away. I know Veronica did the same thing. I work there, and I know these people, and I've been there for years. So I know they came out and looked. But if you do have garbage pails without lids, if you, I mean, some of these mice can get in an opening. You had just mentioned that there was an opening somewhere in your residence because of an air conditioning contractor. It doesn't need to be much larger than a dime.
Right.
Okay, so some of these things, because it's a private, restaurants all day long, we're in there. It's governed by 824 New Jersey Administrative Code. We'll take a look at it. But what I can do is I could ask our public information officer for some things that maybe we can post to our township website, maybe a press release. And I see her, I'll see her in the morning. But there are precautions. I mean, when you make a comfortable surrounding for any critter, they're gonna be there. They're gonna breed. They're gonna have droppings. And it's, you wanna make it as uncomfortable as possible. And so I think what I can do, working there, is have a press release out there, bring it to the attention of our environmental public health coordinator again. See if he has any updates, because that's not my day-to-day. I do DUI and other things in the schools.
Okay. Maybe see if residents have a mice problem. They can contact you or...
Right, but we have no authority to go into a house.
I've had one other person come to me, and they were very upset that people were knocking on their doors asking if they had a mice issue and made it sound like it was an epidemic in this town. That's what, the only other complaint that I received, that they felt it was somebody trying to stir the pot and create hype over something that didn't exist. And that was somebody who lived on Penn Avenue in the Pine section.
Penn Avenue?
Mm-hmm, which it runs from Lacy Road to Lakeside Drive that way.
I only walked around one time.
Yeah, I don't know. Somebody had called me because they said, "What's going on?" They're saying there's something going on.
Like, I've been dealing with this for a year, okay? For a year I've been dealing with it.
It was quite a few months ago when I saw this complaint, and that's when I, I hand-walked it over.
Okay. But I've talked to people, like, you go to Home Depot, you talk to people? Because I'm trying to figure out how to seal holes, how to take care of the mice issue, you know what I mean? There's a lot of people that have a problem with mice. This is not just Lacy. It's Berkeley. It's Tom Tiver. And a lot of people don't even know they have mice. If you don't start, like, I never knew I had mice, so I started tearing out insulation. Who goes up in their attic and tears up insulation? You know what I'm saying? So there may be people out there that don't have it. I went over to a friend's house, because to me, what they do in your upstairs, they leave little tiny mice species. It's not like the log that you always see.
It's like a poppy seed side, almost. It's almost like the size of a poppy seed.
The people that I work with are some of the top academic capital. They're licensed in different areas of environmental health. What I'll do tomorrow morning is I will call them, and we'll get together a press release. I'll call Veronica on the phone, and we'll see if we can post it to our website, lacytownship.org. And this won't be any opinion. This will be science. And so then, we will do that. I mean, I don't want anybody to be affected negatively. So it concerns me when you come up here, but I want you to know that our, when I say "me", not me, my department, Ocean County Board of Health, did have licensed people out here looking at this.
But I went to, I went with a friend somewhere, and they had a baby crawling on the floor. And like, I never looked. To me, it looks like dirt, you know what I mean? And there's a baby crawling on the floor, and I saw mice species along the wall. Like, if you're not looking for it, I've never looked for this in my life. I've never been exposed to it. So it's like, now I notice and I see it, and I'm just concerned about, like, all residents. And like I say, if there's a fungal mold that can grow from the other feces, like, on the CDC website, to me, it stands to reason that it could grow from the mice species, especially when I've done a study and it's shown that. And then we don't know how, you know, if you'd get sick from that, and I know that's not your issue, but you can't deal with that. But I wanted to bring this out in the open, so, you know, you guys can be aware of it, and if there's anything you can do, because I've done everything I can do. To try to go to the CDC and send them emails and figure out, you know, what's going on, what kind of diseases you can catch from a deer mice that my family might have. You can't get answers, and the doctors around here don't know, you know? So now, now I have to check out for the Giardia, which could come from the feces, you know, and be tested for that. But if that's the case, that's a national, you have to, they have to report that. If my family has that, then that has to be reported to the state and then to the CDC.
Different communicable diseases, based on severity, are reportable on different intervals. And that's on the State Health Department's website, NJDOH, right? So if you allege that, I mean, the doctors, the physicians in the area know what a reportable disease is. They know that, and they are obligated and bound to do that. Okay, so when you look on a website, you can find a lot, but we have to stay in the realm of what is actually here and what a laboratory results say. So let me go to our environmental coordinator tomorrow morning. I will have additional information, because this is something I feel obligated I should be doing for the town, and I'll certainly bring it to the rest of his council.
I'm not trying to scare anybody, and I apologize if I upset anybody by walking around one day for two hours. I do, that's not my intent. And most people with their immune system, the, like, the fungal mold and stuff like that, it doesn't bother you because your immune system takes care of that. Me, unfortunately, whatever's going on, my immune system's compromised. So whatever's happening, you know what I mean? So anyway, all right, I just wanted to bring that up, and whatever you can do, that'll be good.
Mr. Oliver, before you leave, just leave Mr. Cortel your phone number where, in case somebody wants to reach out to you from the Board of Health.
Is it on here at all?
It should be on the top in the front, the bottom letter.
Let me see.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver? Just your name and address.
I'll have to get it from you.
Yeah, I don't want it to...
Or I'll ask you.
Wait, here, the back letter. This is the back.
Good evening. Allison Lunt, Beverly Road. Couple of things. Number one, I guess about a year ago, I was up here, and I spoke about Narcan and the availability for the public to have that as a medication... and the availability for the public to have that as a, a medication that you can have in your home if you're living with someone who has an opiate addiction. That, you know, you can go to a doctor, get a prescription for it, and have that available. And I am glad to hear that, you know, Narcan is being spoken about a lot more freely, you know, by this board, and hopefully, you know, the community will learn more and more about it. So very pleased about that, because the problem doesn't seem to be going away anytime soon. The second thing is just some clarification. I believe it was last month regarding the three million dollar total bond that the township has for the road project that you are, I guess, continuing. I'm not really certain, and I guess that is my question. Because apparently there was some activity as far as moving the soft cost allowance from a million to adding two hundred fifty thousand to that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. There's been some questions as to why that occurred, and I guess that's my question tonight.
The, as you know, the permit process is still moving forward. We haven't gotten a decision yet. We don't know when we're going to get a decision, whether it be yes or no decision. But we had to put more money into the soft cost account. Our bills are up to date, but the account was depleted, so we moved two hundred fifty thousand dollars from the two million dollars that was sitting there into the soft cost account, which is sitting in the soft cost account now.
Okay, so you are generating more legal, more engineering fees towards this project? And you're anticipating two hundred fifty thousand dollars more towards legal and engineering?
No, we're not, we're not anticipating. We're hoping we don't get to two hundred fifty thousand dollars more. But we have been working on the project for seven or eight years now. We've, we've been at the state level. We haven't been at the state for probably the last six months. The state is working on the finalization as to the permit process itself. And we hope to get a answer from them within the next two or three months. So anticipating that we are going to probably have to do some sort of work with, between our engineers and our attorneys. We have to make sure we have the money available to pay for it, so.
Are you looking at doing the project in its entirety?
We really can't say that right now. We're, we're really not going to comment on the project itself this evening other than waiting until we see whether or not we have an approval or denial on the permit itself.
Okay, well, thanks for that clarification. And it's very disappointing, I must add, that, you know, you're just, you seem to be using this bond money as a personal piggy bank for the attorneys and the engineers. And, you know, it's, it's very disheartening, especially, you know, since the intersection improvement now, the Route nine and Lacy Road has, has occurred, and traffic seems to be flowing quite nicely there. You know, taking that dedicated right-hand turn from Lacy Road, excuse me, from Route nine south, and, you know, messing with that by putting in your road is, seems to be defeating the purpose of traffic flow. You know? And also, there's the question of the property acquisition that you would need for stormwater development. That, I think it was eight fifty-two Lot five, I believe. That's, you know, a property that you don't own, and it's part of the project, so, I don't know. Have you acquired that property yet?
No, we have not acquired any property. Again, until we have the permit in hand, we don't know whether it will be a need to acquire that property or not.
Yeah, that's, that's a big piece of the stormwater plan, and, you know.
And you're talking about a piece of property that's on the very north end of the project if the project is approved. I just want to make one comment, because I do agree with you that the right turn on Lacy Road is working very well. But two of the major components of this project from day one when we decided to take a move forward with it was the fact that we wanted the roadway built so that we would have a safer ingress and egress for the St. Pius Church folks, as well as for the folk of the school. The intersection you're talking about, when you're coming around there and turning right on Lacy Road, has a full-time acceleration lane, which is now running directly into the way the school buses go in and out of that site. So we still believe that in a situation to make it safe for the schoolchildren and for the resident, for the people in St. Pius Church, that the road will be a very important factor.
And you plan to put a traffic light at that full-time acceleration lane?
The state has completed what they're going to do at this point. The only thing that they haven't completed is the bus stop.
I don't believe that there was a traffic light on your plan, so.
Lacy Road or not?
No, at the, uh...
Lacy Road and Road right away, there will be a traffic light there.
Yeah, but the county had put provisions in for one there.
Oh, really?
When they widened Lacy Road.
So that, so that right, that right turn traffic that's moving so nicely is going to come to a complete stop at the traffic light that you proposed, so.
Well, to come to a complete stop at the traffic light, when our buses with our schoolchildren are trying to get out, and our, our people in St. Pius Church are trying to get out, we want to eliminate the fact that we have to have a police officer standing in the middle of a four-lane highway with traffic coming up and down that highway fifty miles an hour, so.
And also, I might add, what is really a shame is if you looked at all of that construction area near Route nine, you see that red and white house, that old house that's still standing there. And, you know, that was the solution years ago and is a solution now. It backs up to the school. It's an eager route out to Route nine, very easy peasy. And there it stands. And it's just really interesting that, you know, that piece of property is still available for an easy solution for all involved.
There would really be an issue for the schools to deal with that.
Oh, sure, it was. Yeah, because it backs up to the property.
Thanks, thanks for listening. Anyone else? I might have time. Just your name and address, please.
Donna Barley, twenty Marigold Lane. Good evening. Thanks for welcoming to speak. It's been a while since I've been here. Allison did touch on a couple of things, but I first want to say that I'm really, really excited that the intersection is finally done. I mean, some of you may know, I have dedicated a lot of time and effort in that since two thousand, when I first met Commissioner Weinstein. And I'm really, really happy after fourteen years. It's finally completed. It's hard to improve. And it is flowing so nicely, and I've gotten a lot of phone calls, and people have thanked me. And, um, and it's not, obviously, I don't want to give credit for everything. Senator Connors was very instrumental over the years with that intersection. I do want to say I'm really disappointed to hear you say that you're still pursuing the road on the right of way. Knowing that your argument had always been traffic on Route nine. We know about the lot, lot jam always happen from Stars Beach down, and they don't seem to have that problem anymore. So it's disappointing. As far as the school, I had brought out the point about the house to Mayor Parker years ago, and he agreed. That white and red house backs up to the back of the school. And all of the children that go to that school are south and east. You know, none of them are north. So it would make perfect sense for the buses to come out, exit onto Route nine, controlled intersection going south, because that's where the children are from. And then when they have to enter the school, they're entering the school from Lacy Road. It's a right-hand turn both ways, so you're not going against traffic. That house back then was about four hundred fifty thousand dollars on the market. I have no idea what it is today. But it can't be much more than that, and it's far cry from what you would be spending on building a road. I'm sure you've noticed the people that are using the trail from the pond, south. Every day, there's people on it, and more and more people on it. And they love it. It's a, it's a wonderful thing. And I've always said that trail in its entirety would be such a, a great benefit for the township. Takes people off of walking on the side of Route nine. And I do see people from Shoprate McDonald's walking the trail to get to work, because now they realize that the trail is there, and, you know, it's being utilized by so, so many people. And I would hope that you would each take the moment to take a bike ride or walk, at least on a completed portions. And it would be a nice thing. I know years ago, Trust for Public Land and the New Jersey Conservation Foundation had an interest in purchasing the four miles from Lacy Township. And I'm sure that Mr. Gilmar could, you know, broker a deal with them, you know, because I know he does a lot of that with those organizations. So it'd be, would be a way, Lacy Township, to sell it, make some money off the property, and then have Trust for Public Land turn around and donate to the county, so they can finish their project. You know, fifteen point six mile trail in its, you know, entirety, you know, continuous would be, it, it just doesn't make sense to have this hole in the middle. We have the prettiest portion of town. We have the lakes, we have the parks, we have the connections to churches from that trail. There's so many connections. I mean, I always envisioned people walking to St. Pius with a trail, at least the people from the communities that, you know, put it up against it. So I'm really, really disappointed that the township is going to pursue. I know that a lot of money has been spent over the years, but selling it to Trust for Public Land could be a way to recoup some of that back. And certainly, everybody saves space, and you have a project that is just, you know, still a wonderful, beautiful thing. And I hope you will rethink that at some point in time.
Just one comment on it, because I, I don't want people to get the wrong impression that this governing body is not in favor of the trail. We, all of us up here are looking to build the trail the rest of the way through town from Lacy Road north. Having said that, I also want to point out the fact that the trail, I have walked the trail, it is a beautiful pathway, but the trail does bring additional problems to the municipality, which, you know, are not something that most people talk about. We have a tremendous amount of people calling along that trail. You know, they're having problems with kids hanging out. We're having problems with drugs. We're having a problem with drinking. We, we had problems with a homeowner selling drugs out of the back of his house. I'm one of the houses that backs up to the trail. So we, we have these issues to deal with, which we're dealing with. But unfortunately, the, the trail, the way the county has designed it, does not give us the ability to get vehicles in there. So we're, you know, they've got those, those posts in front of every one of the entrances. So we do believe that, you know, and, and again, this is if the permit is issued. If the permit is issued, that the roadway and the trail will work very well together. But I, I have to agree with you, the trail is a beautiful thing. I've talked to mayors from up and down, you know, where the trail exists, and they, they all agree. But at the same time, they're all experiencing new types of problems, which were never thought about early on in the early stages. But, but again, it's a, it's a situation you've got to work your way through, so. Well, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, that's a comment that has, you know, been out there for a long time. You know, it kind of scares people, and they think of that. The drug problem is everywhere. That's not, that's, you know, the real thing. It's not just on the trail. I've lived there for twenty, twenty-one years now. Not, but I've never really had a problem. I see people all the time. And frankly, the, once the trail is completed, the population on the trail increases. When it increases, crime goes down. That's a statistic. So, you know, if it was completed in that section, maybe that would help to ease some of the, you know, kids hanging out. And, and, you know, frankly, kids hang out, but not every one of them is doing drugs.
Oh, no, no, I agree. I mean, but kids are kids, and, and a lot of parents that I talk to around town are concerned about letting their kids on that trail. You know, especially in the, in the later hours when it's starting to get dark and everything.
Well, anyway, you know, at night, of course, you know.
There's going to be problems out there at night, I believe. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I see people all day, more, more so than ever, on the trail. Kids riding their bikes, and, you know, it's a pleasant thing to see, because they're not riding on some good bike. So, I mean, and I disagree with you when you say that there's no access for the police, because I remember years ago, some of the police department would say, "No, we can't wait for that, because, you know, then we can get on our bikes and patrol."
They wouldn't have bikes.
I know that, but, you know, they could have bikes to do that.
I, I...
You know, we can go back and forth, because we've done this three years.
Yeah, we've talked about, yeah, and, and I...
We have our own opinions of it, but I just really, really wish you would just take another look at it. Because if you're telling me that you will continue to pursue it, we're going to continue to fight it and pull work. But let me ask you this, though. If the DEEP does deny the permit, will, will the township finally look to perhaps sell the property and let the county finish the project?
I can't speak for the committee. That's really something. We have to wait and see. We don't know whether we're going to get it or not get it. And, and we don't know the timeframe involved in getting to that point. But I, I don't believe it's going to be much longer. I think it's going to be something we're going to know in the next couple of months. And I certainly welcome you back to the microphone to congratulate me or to ask me if I'm not going to have a building here.
Same question. I mean, you're all here, I mean...
Yeah, I, I don't think anyone's going to dive into that discussion tonight, so.
I didn't expect you to talk.
Yeah, but it's good to hear. Thanks, Jimmy.
Jim Schmidling, Sunrise Boulevard, Sunrise Beach. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but since this subject, the intersection, came up, I had no choice. At noon time today, I was going down Route nine south to the water company to pay my water bill. The traffic now, that used to back up like Kate and Allies, where it goes from two lanes to one lane, has now moved down almost to Oak Street, and it was backed all the way up to Jones Road on the left-hand lane, the people that are going straight ahead, south on nine. And this is a miserable day in May. This is not even summertime. And schools were in session. We had no school teachers or kids on the road. And here the traffic was already backed up to there. Besides that, when the trail is complete across Lacy Road, Lacy Road, to the best of my knowledge, will be the only four-lane highway without a boulevard in the middle, where people on this trail will have to cross by foot or by bike. Barnicot Boulevard has four lanes also, but there is a grass median in the middle. On Lacy Road, it's going to be worth your life to try to bike across Lacy Road or walk across Lacy Road. It's a forty mile an hour highway at that particular point where the trail will cross. So the only way it's going to work is if we build the road, the county puts in the traffic light, and you have the traffic light to cross with to continue along on your trail. So just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Regina?
I didn't want to speak tonight.
The bud here goes. Regina with the sentence, "A sunset drive, sunrise beach."
All the things you mentioned about being afraid of on that trail, every week when I get the police report on email on Tuesdays, I like dread looking at that thing. Why don't you just build a police substation in the Walmart parking lot? Because all I see is shoplifting, shoplifting, Walmart, people sitting in the car, shooting up, drug deals are going down in Walmart. I'm more afraid of Walmart than I am of any silly trail. Let me be honest with you. Not that I have a set foot in Walmart, okay? But I'm more afraid of that parking lot than a trail.
Let me just make one comment, Regina. Walmart is in our police report a lot. Walmart has probably the best security system and the best security detail you will find.
But it doesn't stop it from being a criminal magnet.
No, but, but that's...
But they're willing to prosecute. That's why you see them so much in the police report, because they're willing to take that step, even for a dollar ninety-nine theft.
A criminal magnet.
No, 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 we have issues everywhere, and I guarantee we have issues in other big box stores and other regular stores.
Home Depot's not blocking either.
Walmart raises the, the level as far as prosecuting people. If you steal a, a roll of lifesavers or something, they will bring you to court.
Immediately, yes. They don't let you miss a thing.
Yeah, and, and our officers respond, but our officers respond and basically put up the, you know, pick up the perp and bring him back, and that's it.
Sure. And I'm just saying, there's a lot more crime going on there than a lot of...
Mr. Moss?
Bill Moss, Fiscane Drive, Department of Labor. First off, I'd like to do what I normally do. On the township bills, which is five million, five hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred twenty-four. I'd like to know that out of that amount, three million, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred sixty-eight dollars went to the county. It's not part of our township bills. Second thing I'd like to do is talk about a letter to the editor that I write today, if I can read that letter, because there's a lot of people that don't get to peek at it. I'll address who it was from at the very end, so you have an idea. The Oyster Creek Generating Nuclear Station will be retired in two thousand and nineteen. With this loss of electrical generation, it is imperative that we have a transition plan to address the future needs of Ocean County to sustain a reliable base load generation. Even with Oyster Creek available and running at full power, we recently experienced an extremely cold winter, which resulted in a peak generation period resulting in a generational lapse. I've worked at the plant for thirty-two years in Lacy here. I understand the benefits and significance of the housing, a base load plant in Lacy. Some benefits of a city generating station in Lacy is that the site is already industrial zoned, and the transmission system is already available with no additional changes. Oyster Creek has been an economical engine, creating jobs and supplies, reliable, ratables of electricity to six hundred thousand homes. We need to continue this legacy to be responsible in having a plan in place to ensure our energy infrastructure is reliable to the robust in Ocean County. It will take leadership on the state and federal levels to accomplish this task. to accomplish this task. Tom MacArthur has taken an interest in our local issues. As we know, Tom MacArthur is running against where Mr. Runyon is now, who are not going to be a congressman, who's dropping out, and this gentleman is running. And he's taken an interest in our local issues for the energy plant for the future. For this reason, I endorse Tom MacArthur for Congress." This is written by Mayor Most.
Uh, Mayor, committee.
Next Mayor Most, Councilman Most, and Mr. Most. Actually, it's written by Mr. Most at this time, at this period. But you gentlemen can't just let this drive by. You've got to, you need something in place here when this plant goes down. If not, these people in the year twenty-twenty-one, after nineteen, after twenty-nineteen, when it closes, something's going to happen, and, and it's going to hit the fan in this town, because their rates are going to go up. We're also going to lose seven hundred people. If we don't have something else going in there in its place, we're losing a lot of people, and that's a lot of homes. And when you lose a lot of homes, banks are going to foreclose on them, leave them out, and our taxes are going to go up just to cover those foreclosed homes. Because it's doing it now, and you see what it's costing us in ratables this year. This year, we're having a tax increase. We can expect another big one, and that goes along, we lose all these ratables in this town. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that get together, try to come up with something that we can put in there, a gas-powered plant. We know JCP&L back there owns a lot of property. We know the city owns property back there. Texas, you know, we're on, you know, the lease off to the right-hand side of the road. You start.
No, we don't own anything on time, no.
I'm sorry, and I apologize. But we do know JCP&L's there. So we just need another plant back there, so keep it in mind. So.
Ms. Most, we have, different members of the governing body have been meeting with the plant, you know, with the state, with the governor's office over the last couple of years. And, and there is movement on trying to locate another user that would come in and build another plant back there. There are certainly are a number of obstacles that have to be overcome, the biggest being a gas line that would have to be run down from up in the Freeland area. But there are ongoing meetings and discussions, you know, and we do have a couple of interested parties. So we, we're not sitting back waiting for it to happen. We are going to continue to move in that direction.
Right, right. Don't let the state sit there, because if you collect the state in three months, they'll forget all about you. Keep acting. Thank you very much.
Thanks for some, Otto. Just your name and address, Otto.
Otto Zell, seven forty-three Lakeside Drive, North. Again, I'm coming about the east. I wish to announce to you that we have two new families of four godlings each on the lake already. And it isn't even really the time for them to come out. I don't know what is going to be done about it, which other than nothing, but the lake will soon be to a stage that nobody wants to go into. To that stage now, last year's use of it pretty near proves that. I just wonder why you're figuring on staffing it, because I doubt very much whether it's going to be usable as a recreational lake, even this year. I feel very badly about this, because I've been in that, going and swam in that lake since I was a kid. And to see it and to be willing to admit that it's gone is very difficult for me. But I have come to that conclusion, that there is neither the will nor the way that we can do anything to save it. Again, I chased them out of my yard, again, the geese.
You didn't chase them to our beach, did you?
Huh?
Chased them off the beach.
And the droppings are all over the place. I just wonder what kind of a health hazard it is if we allow the beaches to be used, you know?
I don't, we're, we're not giving up on the lake. You know, we, we had a lot of issues with the, the middle lake, you know, for a number of years. And if you look at that, that's been, you know, brought back, you know, with the drainage improvements that have been over there. We've, we've done a major amount of improvements, and that, that beach is getting used a lot. I know I told you at one of the prior meetings, we have to staff that beach, because if, if, God forbid, somebody take and go to that beach, and we don't have minimal staffing there, you know, and somebody drowns it, there's an accident, then we have a tremendous liability on the back of the taxpayers. So we, we have to put minimal staff in there, which is what we're going to end up doing. We don't know what type of season we're going to have. We don't know what kind of influx we're going to have with the Canadian geese. We certainly didn't know we had, you know, mice in town. You know, the, those things are beyond our control. But we will be taking in and, you know, continuing to move forward and trying to find a solution, which not only exists here in Lacy, but it's all over the south, you know, Jersey area. These, these geese just come in and take over. You know, it's not, we're not dropping the ball, we're not walking away from it, but we don't have an answer as, as to what's going to solve it.
I know. There's no, there doesn't seem to be an answer to it.
It's hard.
But it seems to me that the mill pond, which was given up upon years ago, has no staffing.
The mill pond doesn't have a beach. There's no beach down there.
Well, they're all along the edges there, and there's one corner that they still.
No, there's, there's no permitted swimming there.
Well, just no swimming on the lake. You do that every time, every time the pollution goes up. You put the no swimming sign out and close the lake and lock the beach up.
Yeah, no, council has advised us that with the improvements we did to that beach, we have a public beach there, which is accessible to the public to utilize during the day, and we have to staff that beach. So we're, we're going to continue to staff.
Because, I mean, it made, you've made a nice parking lot there. The, the school buses use it in the morning to adjust their times for schedules, which is very, which is a good use for it. But outside of that, I don't know what we spent that money for fixing that road going around there, moving the beach.
Well, the, the roadway was, was all hand-in-hand with the dam. We were required by the, the state of New Jersey to take and build the dam, which we don't believe is working properly either.
I guarantee you it's not working properly.
But according to the state, it was built the way it was supposed to be built, and it is working properly. We don't agree with that. But unfortunately, you know, we don't have a lot to say.
Unfortunately, there's no answer to it either.
Yeah, yeah. We, we believe when the, the dam was lower and there was more water flow, we had a better situation over there. And you've seen it, you live right there, so.
Yeah.
But that's not the case that we have right now.
I live, I live there and look at it every day. I call it the miniature Grand Cooley. And it, against what was done by amateurs sixty, seventy years ago, was far more efficient than all these brilliant engineers had done with this one. And it's just disrupted the flow. And they could not even apparently use their instruments of Green Lake up to the same level that it was before the dam was built, yet they squared it the same, the dam is the same height as you wanted before and everything else. But I got water marks on my bulkhead along there that will show you that the water is eight to ten inches lower than it was before that dam was built.
Which makes a big difference.
Yeah. I mean, the brilliant engineers that did it must have been really good. Well, you've got enough problems, so I'll let you.
Well, Otto, I just want to mention, I mean, we do, when, when I say we, I know that the Ocean County Health Department, environmental folks go out, that's on our website, www.ochd.org, that the fresh and saltwater bodies, bathing beaches are tested throughout the county from mid-May up until Labor Day weekend. Okay? And all of those lakes, Harry Wright Lake, every lake, every bathing beach, you can see the results of those tests on our website. So we've been very above board with tech, with, with testing those bodies of water. Now, when you're talking about different flow patterns and things, and we do that per, per the code, the state sanitary code, now, when you're talking about changing the pattern of flow, I mean, and the mayor can help me out with this, I mean, you're, you're talking about just a plethora of environmental regulations with the DEP. You know, nobody wants to see anything negative happen to that lake. That, that lake is part of what makes our town, along with our parks and our people. You know, so we, we, we have addled eggs, you know, we are out there, we are trying to, you know, with staff there and people at the beach in the summer, and people too frequent that beach in the summer.
Well, I think that this past year, I can guarantee you, there were more geese on the beach than there were people. And I'd be willing to bet my house on that one. But I often wonder, when they come and test the water and everything else, they close Deerhead Lake for pollution, yet the entire water that comes into Lake Barnicot comes from Deerhead Lake. And yet, Lake Barnicot is clean. Now, what is the magic in between Deerhead Lake and Barnicot Lake that purifies the water?
Well, they're looking for, in, in freshwater, you're looking for colonies of fecal coliform. Okay? So you're looking specifically, and I'll read right from our, our website, freshwater, two hundred colonies per hundred milliliters of water. Now, I won't tell you I know exactly the sampling method. I think they go eighteen inches or twenty-four inches under the surface, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. So it's very possible you'll get different readings in different parts of the same body of water. Okay? But the testing takes place per the state sanitary code, and those are published on our website. It's a dot org. It's a free public website. And that happens for salt and freshwater bodies throughout this county. We test the water. We have no authority over the geese. The geese are, they're a migratory bird, and there's a lot of parts of the county that are dealing with the same issue right now. So.
When, when was the last time any of these geese around here migrated?
True.
True. I mean, I, I think we should rename them Forkett River Geese rather than Canadian Geese. Because I know these, those little ones that are out there now will never leave Forkett River. And I just wonder how many more colony, you know, how many more families we're going to have this year. Last year, we had a total of two for the entire year. This year, the first time I saw them out there, they're, and they're only, God, they're so small, you wonder if they, how they can even survive. They're swimming right with the mother and father. And the geese are tremendous parents. I've got to give them credit for that. I can guarantee you, four out of four will make it. Thank you.
Thanks, Otto. Thank you. In the back. Name, name and address, please.
Christine Musco, Wilkenberg Avenue, Forkett River. I just wanted to follow what Donna said. I'm not an activist. I don't come here all the time. But I've been displaced for the past year and a half. I just moved back into town. I'm buying house over by St. Pious. Can't build a road in that undoing. I've lived here for over four years. Once you put that road through, it's going to molest what we had. You're talking about ribbon-cutting at Hebrew Park. I remember being on the red trail before Hebrew Park was even there. There are so many solutions, if you think outside the box. You know, the traffic pattern at Lacy Road is the dream. St. Pious's traffic is limited, a couple hours a week for masses and classes. Once you put that road in, there's so much that has changed in this town for forty-seven years. There's not much left to molest. If you take away and put the red trail with a road next to it, it's not a compromise. It's a value can and run. We need to save that and preserve it, because that's part of the reason I want to live here. I've been here all of my life. I can't wait to get back. I've been in Red Town for a year and a half. I love Lacy. We need to preserve the red trail with that road. Just wanted to speak my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Barry?
Barry Bender, Historic Bay Area News. Just want to follow up Mr. Moss, when he commented about Oyster Creek. And I know you guys are working and doing whatever needs to be done to see if we can get something to replace Oyster Creek when and if it, it goes out. The biggest thing to me is that the infrastructure that exists there at Oyster Creek to distribute electricity is worth an enormous, enormous amount of money. And I, to have that sit idle, to me, is, I mean, you might as well take your money and pull the handle on it and watch it go down swirling. Because the infrastructure there, if someone was going to rebuild something like that, you're talking about billions of dollars, not millions. You're talking about billions of dollars. And to follow up on that, I know a young lady whose name will also be appearing in the primary ballot in June. Her name is Amy Belguard, and she has a very, very strong interest in what goes on at Oyster Creek. I've spoken. She's a personal friend of mine. And she's very interested also. She's also running for Congress in our congressional district. Thanks very much.
Sounds good. Thanks, Barry. Anyone else?
Mr. Moss, the closing floor. Move it.
Have a second. Hold your favor. Close your journal.
Move it.
Hold your favor. Thanks, folks.